Good evening. Ladies and gentlemen, I would like to call this, it is 6:00 PM on Thursday, December 7th, and I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to Order and ask that everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you, and I'm gonna stall this out until Alex can get back to his seat because he was doing a favor, and I asked the clerk, please call the roll.
Dr. Boddy?
Here.
Dr. Kavanaugh?
Present.
Mrs. Liligie?
Present.
Mr. Lopez? Mrs. Moore?
Present.
Dr. Nibares, Virginia?
Present.
Dr. Rodriguez?
Present.
Ms. Williams?
Present.
Mrs. Willis?
Present.
Warren is present.
Thank you very much. That is it, are there any additions to the agenda for my colleagues, Mrs. Liligie?
Could we take a moment to read the mission statement, please?
Thank you for reminding me before I got too far, as a reminder to our board colleagues that we are going to ground ourselves at the beginning of every meeting by reading our mission statement, and our mission statement reads that we would like to provide a high-quality education in a culturally safe and nurturing environment that supports all students to live purposeful and fulfilling lives. Okay, thank you. Besides that, are there any additions to the agenda for my colleagues? Okay, Scene 9, that takes us to public comment on agenda items, for which we have none. That brings us on to our very exciting presentation for, first very exciting presentation for the evening. I would like to invite Ms. Shipley and Dr. Foster to the podium right here to talk to us about your experience with the World Food Prize.
Thank you.
Are student the mics are on?
I believe so, yeah. They'll come running out the back if they're not, so.
So, towards the end of October, I participated in the World Food Prize through the Global Youth Institute. I was a student there, and basically a rundown of the World Food Prize is it's a program where people come together to find solutions for problems all over the world focusing in on agriculture and food security, and I had a presentation or a slides, I don't know if it will be somewhere.
I bet they'll queue them up for you. There we go.
Yes. This is my slides. This, the picture in the back is the capital of Des Moines, Iowa, and as you, underneath there's banners that say the World Food Prize, because when you go into Des Moines, it's like projected everywhere, World Food Prize, Global Youth Institute, it's a very centered around it, and I remember learning that Iowa is the number one like soybean and corn producer in America, which is very interesting, and the reason why I think that the World Food Prize is centered in Iowa.
If you want to move the slides to the thicker, you can just press if you'd like.
Oh, I just missed it. This is a picture of me when I got to the airport, and as I said, World Food Prize was posted everywhere, and I was very excited when I saw it. I told my aunt, I was like, "Take a picture of me with this." On the, the first one is when we got to the hotel, it was the Embassy Suites, which was like a very beautiful hotel, five stars, the rooms were huge, there was like, which surprised me, there was like for the breakfast thing, there was a omelet thing where you could like get your own made omelets, like made to order, I've never seen that before. The little magazine that I'm holding is the menu for this restaurant called Zombie where it was like all undead themed burgers, and the menu was a little magazine, which was pretty. The first day we got there, we had a little bit of downtime, and me and my aunt decided to explore downtown Des Moines, and it actually reminded me a lot of Ryo Town and Old Town here in Lansing because of the street art and a bunch of things that like a lot of like personal made shops and stuff were down there, you didn't see any chain restaurants really, or stores down there. I don't think I saw a Meyer or Target or anything, well, not Meyer, but Target. This was the very first day, and when it's really started to kick off, it started at 5:00 when we all went to dinner, and on the table before the food was brought out, there was the little like worm things, and it was very strange because I wasn't prepared really, but.
She wasn't prepared to eat worms.
I did not eat the worms, but some of my friends did that I made. At the top is a picture of me and my aunt on the first day, and when we got there, we were split off into a bunch of groups, and in our groups, there was around like six or seven people, and all of us were from different states, different parts of the world. There was someone like from New York, Minnesota, Mississippi, and we had a delegate from China also in our group. This was the second day when we split off into our roundtable groups to present our papers that we wrote for the program. I remember when I went in there, I was thinking, "I'm fine with presenting in any order, I just do not want to go first," and then I look up, and they're all looking at me, and they're like, "Natalie, would you like to go?" And I was like, "Yes, I will." It was very, very nerve-wracking, but the helpful thing was, so previously before the Global Institute, if there was a statewide one that we went to, and we did kind of the same concept where we were split off into roundtables, and we talked to people in the group, and we just presented our essay with like the key points, our problem and our solution, and then the people, there was experts in the group, they would ask questions about your paper, like, "How did you come up with the solution? What do you, how do you think this will affect the food security in the future?" And, which was very helpful, because from there, we had time to adjust our essays and update them and add any like adjustments to it, which was well, and so I was able to answer every single question that I was asked faithfully and like strongly. This, the picture, the group photo is all the people that were in my group, we were the best group. The photo with like the globe in the center and the big pretty ceiling was, we were in the Iowa Event Center, and we went there for dinner. Lunch and dinner was provided through the World Food Prize and the people who helped. On the third day, we got to go to the Hall of Laureates, which is a very beautiful museum in Des Moines, based around Norman Borlaug and the World Food Prize. These are just some paintings that were in the museum that I thought were very beautiful, and then off to the side is a picture of me holding a mic, talking with Norman Borlaug in the background. For those that don't know, Norman Borlaug is the founder of the World Food Prize. These are prizes that Norman Borlaug has won. In the middle is the Nobel Peace Prize, and I'm holding it, and fun fact, it is very heavy. The one next to it in the red glove is the Norman Borlaug Prize, because Norman Borlaug originally thought that, because for the World Food Prize, it's not the World Food Prize, the Nobel Peace Prize, he thought that there needed to be one based around like agriculture and people who focused in on food security and water scarcity and things like that, and agriculture, and so he kind of made his own prize, and so the winner of the World Food Prize will then get Norman Borlaug Prize, and the, none of the students won, because we didn't, we were the Youth Institute, but this is everyone that was there. There was 150 people total, and from 10 different countries. So when I went there, I was under the impression that everyone was gonna be like freshmen, sophomores, but come to find out, I was one of the youngest people there, because I remember someone was doing a panel and a presentation, and he was just wondering, like he asked a group of people, he was like, "Okay, so how old are you guys?" And someone said, "I'm 15," and he sounded surprised, and I was like, "What? Surprised? I'm 15." I didn't meet anyone else that was 15, everyone else I met were either freshmen in college or like seniors. I think the youngest person I met was 17, so that was shocking to me that there wasn't more people my age there. I also think that this was a very, very fulfilling opportunity to not only learn more about agriculture and problems all around the world and how we can get solutions for them, but also to get connections and make more friends. I have friends now from all over the world that I still talk to to this day, and this was like what, over a month ago? We still talk. I have friends from New York, Mississippi, I still talk to my friend from China, and it's very, very amazing. When we had the Hall of Laureates, there was like a photo challenge that we had to do, and like in our groups, and the first one was we had to get a picture of the rotunda in the background, and everyone copied our idea, and we didn't end up winning the little challenge at the end, but I think that ours was the best. The black and white photo was just someone doing a presentation, and I'm the one by the podium doing the presentation. You can't see in the photo, but I'm pointing at the picture of Norman Borlaug that was previously in the other page where I was holding a mic talking. This one, we had to pose like we were in the picture, and I'm off to the side, sitting in the chair. This one was a board meeting, and we decided to have two people arguing, and other people are like sleeping, not paying attention, kind of, as a joke. And these are more pictures, these little globes are on every single table at the Iowa Event Center, which I thought was really pretty, they were like see-through, which you can see, and then off to the side, they had this like giant globe, like where it says "World Food Presentation," I'm holding a sign that says "End Hunger." That was a globe, and it like was huge, clearly. And someone came, I forgot his name, but he is an author, and he came to share a story that he wrote about a boy named Hasbro, and basically this boy was stunted in growth from a very young age and was not able to go to school, and he started school at 15 years old, he started first grade, and by the time he was 21, he was in fourth grade. One in every four children under the age of five are stunted due to malnutrition, sanitation, or bad hygiene, and that's just a lot of lost opportunities, as it says, like a poem not written, a problem not solved, a cure not discovered, and it is a very eye-opening thing, because when I went to this, I had knowledge on things that were going on around the world, but I wasn't fully aware to everything that really is happening and how many privileges we really do have, the privilege to have been born in America, the privilege to be able to go to school and be in advanced classes and learn, thinking about them, there's children who are my age and are in first grade, and it was just very eye-opening. The woman on the screen is the president of Ethiopia, I was in the same room as her. It was very awesome. I didn't get the chance to talk to her or take a picture with her, she was very, very busy. In the middle is one of the desserts that was provided, carrot cake, and then off to the side, we had to do a challenge through National Geographic where we had to pick a problem and figure out solutions for it, and the one that I selected was to reduce waste, and just waste, because that's something that I think is an issue here in Lansing, because you will walk down on the river trail and you will see plastic bags, you will see trash and just a bunch of waste, and ways that I thought to fix it is to completely vote out plastic bags, because I found that in New York and California, plastic bags are like no such thing, like people don't use plastic bags anymore, at grocery stores you're given paper bags instead, and just biodegradable items, reusable bags, and things like that can really help the pollution, which can help reduce malnutrition, reduce food security, help crops grow. This is me and my group, and on the last day, the people who founded the World Food Prize decided to throw us a little party, and there was a DJ and music and like a photo booth, and all of our group leaders put on like a dance for us from the song from the Barbie movie, and it was very, very fun. If I knew how to put videos on the slides, which I don't know if you can do that, but I would show you guys, fine. It was cool, it was all choreographed, we all were like surprised, like, "Oh my gosh, they're dancing." I'm the one with the big glasses on. This is all of the Michigan people. Next to me is Deb, she works through MSU and is at the like head of the Michigan Institute for the World Food Prize. The two boys across from me go to Waverly, and then the three girls go to Ovidelli, about 30 minutes away, and this was when we went to Zombie, like the magazine burger place. This is another picture of our group. This was at the very end of the whole experience. This was a bridge in Des Moines, which I took a picture of, because aside agriculture and food security, and everything I'm very passionate about is women's rights and feminism and everything like that, so I thought it was very wonderful to see a bridge that said "Women of Achievement," and at the bottom is a bunch of names of women who have achieved great things. This was just a very pretty picture, I took this, was the author of the book about the boy who was malnourished, who was doing a speech.
I want to thank the board for giving Natalie to come here, an opportunity to talk to us, but I also want you to understand the significance. There were 60 students that participated in the Michigan World Food Prize. Seven, well, first of all, they selected students to ask to interview to be able to go to the Global Youth Institute, which is what she went to, and Natalie interviewed and was selected. We might have had a second person, but he forgot his interview day, or for some reason he didn't go for the interview day. Natalie, this was quite an honor, and so in the future, she can participate in the Michigan.
Don't you want to tell it? Yeah. So, I was selected to, I had to go through an interview to be selected for the global thing, and while the interview day happened, I was volunteering at a kids camp through Lansing Parks and Rec, and so I think that gave me some bonus points. But, so for 2024, I cannot go back as a student, but I can go back as an expert, so I can be someone who sits in the room and is asking questions, and for the global one, I can go back as a group leader, and I can perform a dance for the students. But I just think it's amazing that I can still stay in the program, not only as a student, but I can go back as an expert and I can help the students who are in my position, and it's just a very amazing opportunity that I was given at, especially at such a young age, I feel like. I did, I wrote my essay, I signed up my freshman year of high school, and then it all happened sophomore year.
And you did a poster.
I did do a poster, because Dr. Foster, we, I signed up for her program through MSU, the African Engagement Workshop, and we had to write not only the essay for the World Food Prize, but alongside it, a poster, which was for the African Engagement Workshop, which was very smart of you to kind of slide us into the World Food Prize, because I was not the only one from my school who submitted an essay to the World Food Prize, me and like.
There were six of you.
Six of us submitted our essay and went to the Michigan Youth Institute, and only two of us were emailed for interviews, and I interviewed, and I went.
And so that's out of the 60. So, I wasn't sure we were going to be able to do it this year because of a lot of things going on for me, but the students really want to do it again, so we're going to start in January, we're starting a little later than last year, but there are other students who are interested, and I think to let people know the quality of students that we have in Lansing, and to expose the Lansing students to these opportunities, and she doesn't know it yet, but there's some other opportunities. I know a young woman who's in my department at MSU who came through this, had an opportunity to go to, I think she said to Taiwan, and now she's on the faculty.
That reminds me. There was, someone did a presentation about internships that we can do once we are old enough, I'm not old enough, unfortunately. Some, you had to be 16, some you had to be 18, where over the summer, you could go to a completely different country and live off-grid and learn several things, learn new languages. I know someone went to Costa Rica, I know that there's one where you can go to Poland, which I would like to do because I have, I am Polish, I have family there on my mom's side, well, ancestors. And it's just really awesome, and it's something that I think I'll look into, because an internship would just be an amazing opportunity to like learn a new language or be open to more experiences, because like I said earlier, obviously I had knowledge on the subject, but it was eye-opening to even just go to Iowa and look at all these things and see so many people who are interested in the same thing and see these presentations, and just to think of how more eye-opening it would be if I actually got to go there and witness it firsthand, and it was an amazing opportunity. I met so many people, I made so many connections, and it was just very wonderful that I got to do it.
So she went with all expenses paid. I know you've got a full agenda, but I want to thank Mrs. Bates for being here tonight, Assistant Principal at Easter, and I want to thank the principal and all the people that supported the program and the students. It was amazing. I didn't go, I wasn't able to go because of other things, but they, she had all expenses paid for her and her aunt, and hopefully we'll have other students that are going, because we want to open the students' minds.
Thank you.
So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before we let you get too far, does any board members have any questions for Natalie or Dr. Foster? You've gone before.
I don't have a question, and I know we have a full agenda. Everybody, all eyes on me, but I do want to say, I was totally engaged in your presentation. Dr. Foster, thank you for being who you are, and always remember this, I was going to ask you if you were connected with anybody, were you going to keep in contact with people, but people come into your life for a reason, a season, and a lifetime, so I am so excited for you, keep up the good work, you are a future leader, and that's all I got to say.
I would like to say that she did her own presentation. She did it, I didn't do it, we chatted about what kinds of things you all might want to know about, but she did it all.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you to Dr. Foster for requesting that we have an opportunity to hear this presentation and hear about these wonderful opportunities that our children are exposed to here in Ways and School District. I don't think I've been to Des Moines, I guess, so, pretty excited. Okay, next on the agenda, we have our Health and Wellness Update with Dr. Su.
That will be a hard presentation to call. Well, good evening, and thank you for inviting me back for the monthly Health and Wellness Report. As we enter into this time of religious and cultural celebration, I'm also mindful that December marks the 75th year of the United Nations Declaration of the International Human Rights Day on December the 10th. The connection between human rights, health, and wellness is strong. The passing of former First Lady Rosalynn Carter, a fierce advocate for reducing the stigma of mental health challenges and improving access to healthcare, was a reminder of the power of a single person to affect change and impact the lives of many, not unlike the work that we do every day. On the COVID front, things have remained relatively stable, with 47 staff cases reported in November, fairly evenly distributed across the district. There were 59 student cases reported with small outbreaks at Beekman and Patengill. Remembering that an outbreak is defined as three or more connected cases. Originally, the definition was two or more cases, but over the last year, that's been raised to three or more cases. Overall, the November student cases fell below the October rate, although most likely due to the Thanksgiving week recess, when we had no students in school. The return from break did bring an uptick in cases, likely due to the many Thanksgiving gatherings and travel that occurred. As we prepare for winter break, we again encourage the practice of basic healthy habits such as rest, good nutrition, and activity during the holiday times to lower the risk of all illnesses, especially COVID. We have learned over the past three years that increasing mitigation strategies such as ventilation, air purifiers, even opening windows just an inch in the house will help reduce all airborne illnesses, COVID included, and we must always include frequent hand washing, something that teachers say probably 50 times a day. It's also a good idea to mask in crowded indoor settings, especially if you're traveling to new communities, new households, or air travel in particular. Most importantly, stay home if you are not feeling well. This is very difficult during the holiday season when friends and family gather, but if you are not feeling well, the best strategy is to stay at home. The Student Development Program continues to grow, with more than 950 participants in November, our best month yet. This was up from 811 in September and 672 in October. Remembering October had a little dip because we were doing some renovations and were out of the field house for a few days. We are continuing our partnership with Sodexo, the Greater Lansing Food Bank, and Cristo Rey. Sodexo continues to provide super snack bags to our students every day, and ongoing support with data collection, record-keeping, and supplies needed to safely deliver and serve more than 100 students per day. The Greater Lansing Food Bank and Cristo Rey have partnered with us to provide homemade dinner to our students Monday through Thursday, with Tuesdays being designated as Taco Tuesday, a big hit with the students. Our LCC volleyball trainers have returned with great enthusiasm. This winter, we are offering volleyball, basketball, soccer, tennis, and football with our MSU football players, along with our usual strength and conditioning, speed and agility, snacks, dinner, and academic tutoring. We are a busy place. In the fall, we were able to create a shoes, clothing, and winter wear closet through the generous donations of multiple Horford families. We have distributed more than 100 pairs of athletic shoes and many, many socks and winter coats to our students through the generosity of Liz, Al, and John Horford's families. We greatly appreciate their kind support of our students. We're continuing the Field House as a Greater Lansing Food Bank distribution site for any family in the district. Food bags are easily accessible and available in the north side lobby of the Field House. Families may simply pull up, come in, and select food bags to take home as needed. We've also partnered with the Greater Lansing Soccer Organization for daily training, and they are now running and independently run soccer games and training at the Field House on Sunday evenings. The BIPOC Care Closet opened up again with more than 1,500 orders in the last six weeks. We are busy filling orders and keeping up with the demand. The Office of School Culture has generously supported the Care Closet with grant funding, and we are welcoming donations from the community, too. Our upcoming projects include welcoming four AmeriCorps volunteer, national service workers to the Office of School Culture. Our four service workers will focus on the FORT program, creating a sustainable gardening project within the district, administrative support, and the BIPOC Care Closet maintenance and expansion. Our first service worker arrived yesterday and is beginning work with the FORT program. The remaining three will join us. The remaining three will join us in January. The Mileage Club is set and ready to go on March first with all K-8 schools participating. And finally, our tap water safety program with a board of water and light will also begin after the holiday break. Twenty K-three classrooms will participate in this first water safety program in Michigan. We are excited to begin this project in the new year. I appreciate the opportunity to share our health and wellness updates and wish you all a happy holiday season.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments for my colleagues? I think I'm one sniffle away from taking your advice and going home. Dr. Wheeler, um, Dr. Cavanaugh?
Hi, Dr. Wheeler. Thank you so much for the information. You mentioned that you were seeking community donations to the care closet.
Yes.
Um, if people are interested in donating, whom should they contact?
It would probably be most efficient to contact my office, um, which can, I can be reached either by phone or by my email, either one. My phone is seven five five, twenty-eight hundred. And we would be happy to connect with, uh, community members who are interested in donating.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments, board members? All right, see you then. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Hi. I know we had a little bit of a COVID issue at Beekman, but I'm glad to see that things are going back on track. But believe it or not, um, my family's planning our Christmas party and this is the third year in a row somebody has tested positive for COVID. It's not that it's been a different person every time, but it's still a different, so. Um, next, uh, we are on to our report from Superintendent.
Uh, thank you very much, President Willis. So good evening, everyone. It's, uh, again, always an honor and privilege to be here, but today's a, a special day. Um, today at about two PM, uh, we had a really amazing press conference. And if you remember, not that anybody's taking notes, but about a year ago, uh, I was wearing the same suit. Uh, and we gave the same presentation, uh, as this press conference, but it was a very different press conference. Last year, we got the state's report on how our schools were doing. It's called the School Index Report. And what a school index is, is a look at how your school in general and in total is doing. So it's not just test scores, but it includes test scores. It's things like attendance rates. It's things like growth rates. It's even something as important as the number of physical education teachers per child. The number of librarians per child. It's an amalgam of data that looks at how well our schools are doing. And last year, we had many of our schools that were not doing well, so poorly in fact, that they were beneath the five percent rule, which is if you are in the bottom five percent of the state, you go into something called a partnership district. And we explained all of this last year. We talked about how we were owning this. We understood this. This was something that, you know, we, we saw and we wanted to say that we hear it and we're going to work on getting things better. And today, we were able to say just how much better we have gotten. And it was an incredible show of how much has happened in just one year. Behind me, as I spoke, were teachers, principal, central office, all of the people that have made things better. And the number that stands really apart is that if you take the district's numbers from last year, well, two years ago, and you look at the numbers that were published, which were the end of last year, the district increased by sixty-six point one percent. That's incredible. What that says is that our district across the board is doing sixty-six percent better than it had been the year before. And again, this is not just test scores. This is attendance rates. This is PE. This is growth rates. These are things that we care about. Do we care about test scores? You bet. Do we, but we also care about things like attendance. And we think, we care about things like the arts and library and PE and growth rates. And, you know, even today, I said, we know that we still have a lot to do. We have a lot to grow. But the fact that what's happening is, is pretty remarkable. The other thing that was really highlighted is that in every grade in both English and math, our M-step scores went up. So think about it. Every grade in every subject that is tested by M-step in the district went up. That's wonderful. Now, should our schools' scores be higher? A hundred percent, right? There's no question that we need to do better, but the fact that we're seeing those green shoots, we're seeing that, that in- increase. And the other big number that for whatever reason the, the paper really ran with, uh, is that for the first time in decades, we actually had increased enrollment. Uh, our enrollment went up by a hundred and thirty-six students, uh, this year, which is really a testament to our families believing in us again and wanting to stay. One of the things that I think is really important to mention is that historically, what we were seeing in this district is that families kind of sent their kids to elementary schools, but when they were over in third grade or fourth grade, the families tended to go somewhere else. And one of the changes we made this year was by combining some schools and creating more K-eights. And what did we see? We saw that families that were in the school in third grade wanted to stay in fourth and wanted to stay in fifth. So instead of looking at the data where it used to be a big drop between the number of students we had in third grade to the number of students we have in fourth grade, in fact, this year we have more kids in fourth grade than we do in third grade. And a, a testament is to the schools that our families like and the children that are staying in there. And so just to be able to put this in perspective, our enrollment increased for the first time in decades. Our index score, which is an amalgam of scores, increased by sixty-six percent. Some of our schools, and I'll talk about them, not only went up, because remember the sixty-six is an average, some of our schools went up a hundred percent, a hundred and fifty percent, two hundred percent, which shows just the incredible work of our teachers, our principals, and the folks that have been really doing this great work. Assistants, bus drivers, you name it. Everybody is part of this. And you cannot forget the families at home too. It's because of their support of our children and of course, them helping the kids at home, sending them to school, um, is really, really important. So, you know, a place like Dwight Rich went up by a hundred and thirty-seven percent. Gardner, ninety-four percent. Luton, a hundred and nineteen percent. Patengill, a hundred and twenty-three percent. Wexford, a hundred and thirty-six percent. Post Oak, I'll say only went up forty-five percent, but that's because their number was already at fifty. It couldn't really double because you can't get more than a hundred. But they went up, uh, and were at seventy-three percent. But the numbers that I really look at are the growth numbers. Again, the, this, this index is an amalgam of numbers. A growth index is really about did kids while they were with us grow? And schools like Luton had a ninety-eight on their growth index, Patengill a ninety, Post Oak a ninety-nine. So again, this isn't about, oh, a kid comes at a certain level and you maintain. This is we in the district are getting kids to grow. And that is something really powerful. And you've heard me talk about this before. Sadly, historically in the Lansing School District, this was not the case. Stanford had done a really very, very thoughtful, uh, look at school districts across the country from two thousand eight to two thousand eighteen, so you can't blame COVID. It was before COVID. And the Lansing School District over that ten-year period had negative growth rates, meaning that kids were not making the progress that they were supposed to over and over and over again. And now what did we see this year, really this is last year's numbers, is that our schools were having this increase in growth. And that is really, really incredible. Um, you know, some other, you know, schools, you know, it's just, it, it's just special that, um, that we're seeing these things. A, a big shout out I want to give to Kavanaugh. Even though their, uh, overall index only went up by thirty-seven percent only, still incredible, thirty-seven percent. But they had one of the highest proficiency indexes. And again, there's different ways of looking at these things. Proficiency, are kids at grade level where they need to be? Growth, are they growing? We have some schools where the growth rates were astronomical, and then we have some schools where the proficiency rates, uh, Kavanaugh's proficiency went up by twenty points. That is a big deal. And, you know, I will take zero of the credit, um, but I want to give the credit. I want to just thank the incredible support of this board, a- and I really mean this. The changes that we've made in the two and a half years that I've been here have been difficult for some. We've moved a lot of people's cheese, and I appreciate that. But we're starting to reap these incredible benefits, but more importantly, the children are starting to reap these incredible benefits. And none of this could have been done without our teachers, without our principals, without our aides, without our paraprofessionals, without our secretaries, without our families, without our staff support, without the, the community writ large. Right? We had a meeting with a bunch of our mentoring programs thi- this week. And when I looked around that table, it was ten people that have lived in this community their entire lives who had never been even invited to the table to be part of our, uh, school district. And now here they are tutoring at our schools, giving support. So again, I thank this board because your faith in, in me, your faith in our leadership, your faith in the direction we're taking means a, a lot because we can make these changes. And then I really want to say to the families out there, thank you for believing in us. We appreciate that it hasn't been necessarily the easiest road and we know the history behind the district, but things are getting better. Things are changing. And one thing to note, almost as a preface to something that's going to happen in a couple of months, is the school index scores, they all include last year's information, which makes sense, right? You get last year's, now you look at it. The one data piece it does not include from last year is graduation rates. The reason for that is that the graduation rates haven't been finalized yet by MDE. They take a long time because it includes things that happen in the summer and they have to look at all those things. So these index scores for the high schools do not include last year's graduation. They include two years ago graduation, which we know is low. But come end of January, beginning of February, we will have another incredible press conference where we show what the high schools have been doing when it comes to graduation. We know that the graduation rate for last year will be on record, the highest graduation rate the district has ever seen. Uh, we know it is above seventy percent, which is the, the highest on record that this district has ever had. We know it's going to be higher than that. We just don't know how much higher. Uh, because the state is still looking at some of the data that, uh, they're looking at. And again, with graduation rates, I want to be really clear here, is that the way that the state looks at graduation rates now is it's students that started in ninth grade and every one of those are counted. So when you look sometimes historically at graduation rates and a school says they have a eighty percent graduation rate or a ninety percent graduation rate, that is the folks that are seniors, how many of them are graduating? The data that the state looks at and crunches is any kid that stepped foot in ninth grade, are they graduating? And that's a better number, right? Because if a child started in ninth grade and let's say dropped out in tenth grade, we should still be responsible for that child. And so now these numbers are the way that the state, uh, looks at it, it does that. And so again, we know that those numbers are there. So with all, uh, love to our high schools, you'll see that their numbers didn't increase as much. They all increased. They all went up. But it's because they're still working on the graduation rates from two years ago. So again, it's just, it's just incredible. It really is wonderful. Now again, do we have a long way to go to get to the, be where we want to be? Absolutely. But this is the time, you know, it's the holiday season. It's the time to be grateful. It's the hot, time to be thankful. It's the time to look at the progress we're making. This is the, this is the time to really, really say that because we know how difficult it's been. COVID changes, uh, dramatic things are happening in this district. We know that there are folks that are feeling, you know, put upon. We know that this is not the easiest thing. And so now that we've got some incredible things to point out to, it's time to kind of, you know, really respect, really turn on the idea of thanking folks and going to folks and saying, look, we have, we know things are better now. We know things are getting, uh, to be better. So the thank you to the teachers, the thank you to the principals, the thank you to the parapros, the thank you to the parents, thank you to the students. I mean, if it wasn't for the students doing the work, none of this would matter, right? So it's really, it's really incredible. And, you know, I wanted personally to thank the board, of course. And then the other folks that I want to thank personally, um, are the unions. The, the Teachers Union, the LSEA, LASA, LEA, you know, the Secretaries Union, the Public Safety, uh, you know, the Meet and Confer. One of the reasons why we've been able to make these changes is that those unions have put students first as well as their members. And that's really important. That doesn't always happen. And so we are able to make these changes because we have a true partner when it comes to, uh, our collective bargaining units. And look at what happens when you treat everybody with respect, when you work together. You get a sixty-six percent increase on a school index. That is, as far as we can tell, unheard of for a district. There are schools that go up that high, but a district this size to do that is just really incredible. So thank you to everybody. And the last thing I will say, as I sort of hinted at, is there are six thousand families who live in Lansing, who send their children to other districts. Be them charter, be them our neighbors. We understand that you made that decision. But it's time to come home. Like the prodigal son, we will bring you to open arms. We will not be sad that you left, like the second son says. We're going to be like the family. You live in Lansing. You love Lansing. You care about Lansing. We're making that progress. Be part of this story. Be part of what's happening here. And, uh, we really welcome you, uh, with open arms to come home. So with that, I turn it over to our wonderful president.
Thank you. I, I, in addition to hearing all of this wonderful updates, I'm really, really looking forward to our performance update. What is it, the thirty-four B?
It was ninety-eight B.
Ninety-eight B. Um, and hearing how we've engaged in our partnerships and how that has, um, uh, our partnership buildings, how that has, um, increased our performance. Any questions?
I do. Ninety, ninety-eight B is in February, right? Okay, perfect.
That'll be, that'll be a good.
Yeah. And just for those listening and, and understanding is if you remember the last couple of years, we present, uh, very specific data that the state asks us to present twice a year. We usually do it in early February and then we do it sometime May or June. Uh, so certainly stay tuned to that.
Any other questions, coordinators? All right. Thank you. Thank you very much for that update. It's very exciting news for us. Next, we are on to our routine matters and community reports. First, we have Dr. Levis with our ISFOA report.
Thank you, President. I said to all of you and ladies now this afternoon with a big attachment. Uh, we had a meeting last Tuesday with the ISFOA group for more than almost two hours. And the person who was invited was Brad Banazic from the, I mean, from Michigan State, Michigan Association of School Board. And he presented to us the changes to the Public Employees Relations Act, P E R A. It's a, a lot of changes. And I'm not going to go over all of them because these changes are need to be in the policies before February thirteenth. And I understand that NEOLA, another institution, already had created the policies that they had to send to us. And then the, eh, committee of the policy will meet with the administration and go over and present to the board before February thirteenth the new policies relating to, eh, Public Employees Relations Act. My question was, do we already finish? Eh, we already have a contract with one of the unions. They are referring to all unions, not only teachers. All union, we have already, eh, eh, signed a contract for several years of that. What, eh, what is going to, if that is going to influence any of the things we have in the contract? And we will listen from NEOLA to see what we go to follow in that. After that, uh, I think we spent a lot of time, and you had the whole PowerPoint presentation there, but, um, I think the, we need to, the committee is going to study that, that present the, the, the policies to the board. Also, the superintendent of even counting intermediate school, eh, or in that, in that regard, to the, to this Act number one-one-five, it referred to teachers and many, many things about the teachers and one of the things, evaluation of the teachers. It's going to be a lot of things required until the legislative change in one year maybe from now. Then, after that, the INGAL officers. After that, the Inglewood officers, superintendent roundtable. And I think the retirement for the people who are not union, employees, there are no unions, can be changed. And we got to be alert with that because that is going to, especially the superintendent and the other members in the team could be for their retirement. That maybe, or the way they are going to count in retirement is going to change, maybe. It's not going to be the last three years. Could be only one year at the beginning of the contract. That is a big change. That maybe we had to change their way we promote good retirement for our employees. And the superintendents also talk about security. I think the safety at the schools is a topic that they talk every time they meet. And I think it's a concern that we all have. The board, and the parents, and the students, and the teachers, everybody has a concern about security. And we need to be all together in that. After that, we, everybody went around and shared with every districtist. The my board, I shared with the policies, and that several policies in instructional material, technology, bits, and other many policies. Also, the board education launching school district attend, most of the members attended the conference. And our CPE money is still, is working very well for our students. And one more time, every exception had this acceptable football season this year. Then, my president, that was a long meeting, but I think that you had information to worry about. We will present to you before February 13 policies to be adopted. Thank you very much.
Thank you, I really appreciate it. There's, I really appreciate you sending the notes to us. This is probably the most comprehensive breakdown of the Public Employee Relations Act changes and the repeal of Acts 115 and 143, that changes one of prohibitive bargaining subjects. I just want to clarify, as far as we know, this impacts the next time a bargaining group's contract is that we are required to reopen our contracts to adjust the existing.
Okay, what I understood, nobody's sure about that yet.
Okay.
But if, I think our lawyers, they need to be consulted because they also, the people who work for us at the lawyers, they also have policies. They create policy for other districts.
Right.
And they know that too. But the idea, it is nothing there that contradicts for this in the new laws, then we don't have to do anything. Otherwise, we need to revise them.
Okay, that makes me.
I will give you a sample, a sample of the evaluation of the teachers. If not in the contract, then maybe we had to add in this.
Right, like the contract says they will be evaluated, but it doesn't, it doesn't get into detail that it contradicts.
The details.
Right.
Thank you.
So, that will probably be a really good question to make sure we have anything that contradicts the repeal and the prohibitive subject of bargaining. Well, I guess, hopefully, we just have to strike those out. It doesn't require us to reopen. It just validates, and the law is going to supersede the contract, is what I would assume. I hope that's what it means. Okay.
Maybe next year, later, they will.
Yeah, maybe we'll have to LMA's or commitments and things like that. Okay. All right, stay tuned. That is also part of the reason why, to board colleagues, why we are trying to catch up on as many policies as we can because we know we're going to get a couple dozen policies in the beginning of the year that we're going to need to adjust before the law goes into effect and dead weight. Any other questions for Dr. Rodriguez? Okay. Seeing none, that moves us on to our Equity Committee report. I just want to update my board colleagues and let you all know that the Equity Committee has met twice. I think I shared this last time that we are meeting in a hybrid format. So, we're meeting on Tuesdays virtually and Thursdays in person to allow the opportunity for additional participation. We are currently working on reviewing and revising language in our progress reports that may be deficit focused and not equitable. It has really generated a lot of energy and dynamic discussion around, around what our stakeholders would like to see as we modify that language. But I mean, we are very much in the beginning stages of just reviewing and making plans for recommendations. But of course, any changes that we recommend will come up with the board. I would like to thank Ms. Williams for her participation in the committee that has been very much appreciated by the committee members. I'm also very happy with the dynamic group that we have and the level of involvement that we have. I know we, I feel like we might have lost a little steam at the end of last year, and folks are really engaged right now, which has been encouraging. Ms. Williams, was there anything that you would like to add?
Madam President, I just like to add that I'm excited because we are also hearing from students. We have students that are working with us both online and in the building. So, they are providing their voices as we were working with last week. Our given our board, maybe had a lot to say. So, his comments are going to be shown up as we make these changes as well too. So, to know that students are actively participating and becoming engaged is wonderful because they are a part of this.
Yeah, thank you. Any questions? A shared thing, Ms. Moore?
Yeah, just curious about the grade that which the students that are serving on the.
High school.
High school, okay. All high schools or just?
So, it wasn't, when we opened the application process, it was open to any student?
Oh, yeah, yes.
So, we had, I know when we asked one of the gals who has participated, we were like, what made you do it? She said, my teacher said, hey, this is something out here. You should apply. So, big appreciation to the staff that made sure to spread the word about this participation. Okay. That brings us on to our Personnel Committee report. I, will you look for two, Ms. Moore?
All righty. So, included in your tag this evening is our personnel report for approval. I would like to highlight, I have some great highlights today. We're going to talk about projects and everything that are going on in HR. But first, I want to share with you, we had a total of 12 resignations during this personnel report. We had, for, as far as I want to report the race and ethnicity, I always get my tongue tied when pronouncing that word, so it's not charged to my heart. But I would like to report that as well. We had two black teachers that resigned and two white teachers that resigned. Other staff resignations, non-teachers, we had four black and four white. I would also like to highlight or share with you the new hire non-teachers. We had a total of 26. And for those, excuse me, for the new hires non-teachers, we had two that were Asian, six that were black, two were Hispanic, and 15 were white. For our, and we didn't, I didn't see any new, new positions. I saw positions that are being filled, but they're not actually new positions, correct? On the, for the non-teachers?
Some of them are new.
Some of them, would you like to?
I mean, I mean, I'll defer to HR to get you better. But some of these, if you look at, there's a lot of lunch assistants. Some of them we've added to schools, and some of them are really replacements. But it's difficult to find. So, again, just to remind everybody, the idea of a new hire is if there's a big split between the time that they started versus the time that the job ended. So, we had that conversation before. But again, if you want details about the new folks, we can have HR.
Yeah, we'll get that for the next.
And just to clarify, I was interpreting you that they weren't newly created positions, not whether or not personnel was new, but like it wasn't like an ombudsman of carpet. Like it wasn't a new position.
Or Dean.
Right, right. There's no new, there's no new role. But some of these lunch assistants might be new to the school. One of the things that we've been doing is sending more money to schools and allowing them to hire more people. And one of the things that schools really like is having extra lunch assistants.
And I saw that. I was wondering, like, where is all this flux of lunch assistants coming from? So, okay, that's good to know. Thank you for kind of chiming in, helping out there. So, for our new hire teachers, we had a total of 10. Actually, there's a name on here that I actually know. I'm like, okay, that was good to see. For our new hire teachers, we have a total of 10. One black, eight white, and one multico, multiracial, excuse me. We have three, oh, let me go to the next page, excuse me. Tenure, let's celebrate, or we have two employees that have made tenure, five years. They've been at the district. Thank you for your service. We have a total of three LSEA, or excuse me, we have three Level 3 grievances that are with HR. Recruitment and retention. I'd like to report a couple of programs that are happening. And I'm glad to see this Grow Your Own program is a program for our current employees who wish to go for their master's degree in education. And for those who are already teachers who want to obtain their master's degree or additional endorsements in special education. And what's so amazing about this program is that it's free to all staff members. So, we are supporting our staff. And superintendent, I was glad to see that.
Yeah, absolutely. I'm just, I'm just getting some information from HR just to try to get you as much as I can right now.
I figured you were doing that. All right. We also have multi-college, we have multiple college/university slash/university recruitment fairs coming up in January. I look forward to hearing from our, where we're going to be going in January. We have five new SE interns from MSU that will be joining us as well. SE, MSU, and Special Education. That's right, perfect. Projects, we have new job application interface that's going to be rolling out after New Year. So, this interface will make it easier for potential new staff to complete job applications. This will also allow the district to have, to collect more data at our fingertips, is what I'm reading. But I look forward to hearing more about that as well. Our HR, I'm looking over there and I don't see the HR people. So, thank you.
Christine is sick.
Oh, I hope she feels better. We also have a, we're working with, well, the district is working with the new teacher project, and that is to streamline our HR system. So, I'm looking, we're looking forward to hearing more about that system and how it's going to benefit the district. Madam President, that concludes my personnel report this evening.
Thank you so much. Ms. Moore, are you able to tell us which bargaining units the grievances are in?
Yes, oh, I thought I did, but I'm sorry about that. It is LSEA.
The author, you're in LSEA?
Yes.
And do you know what level?
Yeah, Level 3. And would you like to expand on what, Level 3 or no?
I'll wait for the HR.
Okay, thank you. I should have known, that I didn't know. So, perfect.
Okay. All right. Seeing, oh, any other questions or comments? Ms. Gilgey?
I just have a couple of comments. I think that this report was the most detailed and robust and responsive to requests from the community in terms of personnel that I've ever seen on seven years here. And I just want to thank you for your work on the Personnel Committee. As Vice President, I can appreciate it.
And I'm going to pass on to thank Madam President for her feedback.
And then, also, I'm noticing on, just my last comment, that there are two retirements that I've seen. Do you want to speak to those?
Oh, I want to. Joshua Hicks, if I could sing, you know I would sing. But I won't. Joshua Hicks has been with the district for 32 years. And thank you for your service if you're listening tonight. And also, there's a secretary in North, Kendra Kennedy, who's leaving us. I usually don't say names, but since I mentioned Joshua's name, I want, I didn't want to leave out the other individual. But thank you all for your service. But thank you for bringing that up, yes, two retirements.
Thank you. I mean, you can say. Okay, any other questions, comments? Just a reminder that receipt and approval of the Personnel Report is on our consent agenda, which we are going to roll right into this evening. Can I get a motion?
Madam President, I move that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. It's been moved by Dr. Kavanaugh, supported by Dr. Rodriguez, that the Board of Education approve the consent agenda as presented, which includes the approval of November 16 regular meeting minutes and receipt and approval of the Personnel Report as presented. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Great, motion passes eight zero. That reminds me, I was remiss at the beginning of the meeting to let the board know that Mr. Lopez did inform me that he was going to be absent this evening.
Can I make a comment about the?
Absolutely.
Sure. So, I just want to point out again, not only are we giving as much information as we possibly can, but for those of you who can see the report, you can see that we are hiring a lot more people than are leaving us, which is a really good thing, right? Is that, you know, the number of resignations and retirements, which is 12 combined, pales in comparison to the number of non-teachers and then teachers hired. Hiring in the middle of the year is really difficult. And so, I want to really give a big shout out to a special department that we just created, which is the Retention and Recruitment Department, who are going out into the community. So, again, anybody who wants to work with us, please let us know.